Meeting, Secretary or Superintendent, can you please take role?
Member Murawski.
Here.
Member Pritchett.
Here.
Member Rhodes.
Present.
Member Villa.
Here.
Member Wu.
Present.
All right, we will move into closed session. All right, I'm calling back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education Special Meeting. We have your reconvening and announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are no announcements out of closed session.
Thank you. Item 6.0 Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 6.1 Proposed Implementation of COVID-19 Relief Funds. Mr. Ramos?
Online, there you are.
And President Pritchett, if I can just introduce the topic. We are very excited about bringing back to the board this second update with more specific information related to the important topic of how we are thinking of making investments using CARES funds that we have received as one-time funds. And of course, one is our appreciation to the board for the adoption of the board policy on one-time funds, which I hope, and I know that Mr. Ramos will talk about as part of the presentation. This is a fairly lengthy presentation with more details than the first time that we presented this information. We will be committing, and you'll see that toward the end of the presentation. We will be coming back to the board with even greater details related to the information that's going to be presented today. As we have learned, in terms of the value of having gone through this unprecedented pandemic, you'll hear from a cross-functional group of staff members that have been working together very collaboratively to prepare for this presentation, and we look forward to your feedback and questions.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our first presenter this evening, Jesse Castillo, the Director of Accounting Services. He'll take the first couple of slides. Jesse, please.
Good evening, President Pritchett, members of the board, and Superintendent Aguilar. If you can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. All right, this slide is an overview of our various COVID-19 relief funding sources. All of these funding sources have very similar uses, with two primary overarching intended uses, the first being learning loss mitigation, and the second being the mitigation of COVID-19. As we look at this first table here, from left to right, the resource number gets a little into the technical side. This is what we use in our accounting of these various funding sources, but thought we would include as well. In case you'd like to visit the CBE website, it makes it a lot easier to look up and see the various resources they have available there. Excuse me. In total, a total allocation of $280 million, or just under $281 million for our current COVID-19-related funding sources, of which $7 million has been spent and additional $42 million has been allocated. In the total allocated column, as you'll see, there's two primary areas, the first being the AB-86 Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. And that $28.5 million allocated reflects the plan that was recently adopted at last week's board meeting. And the $13.5 million allocated under the SRO-1 funds reflects what's currently encumbered within our system. In total, there is $273,922,000 remaining of unspent COVID-19-related funds. All of these funds, as I mentioned, have very similar uses, but they do have differing requirements. For example, if you look at our SRO funds, if we were to look at purchasing the equipment valued over $5,000 or other similar capital outlay, we would first have to submit a form to CBE and require and receive their preapproval before we can proceed with that purchase. Another example will be our GEAR funds. If we were to look at when we're expending those funds, and then what we had to report back to the state, that's how we use those funds. There's 10 different reporting categories versus our SRO funds, and there's 15 different categories. So there's a lot of nuances between the various funding sources. So as I mentioned, it's all very similar uses. There's different requirements that we have for each of those. Also, a critical component in our planning is looking at the expiration date for all of these funding sources. As you can see in the rightmost column, the nearest would be the AB-86 with the in-person instruction grant and the expanded learning opportunities grant, both with an expiration date of August 31, 2022. And you'll see shortly on the next slide how those expiration dates flow into the table on the next slide, and how that goes into our planning and allocation for these various funding sources. This bottom table shows our previous COVID-19 awards, the first being the coronavirus relief funds of approximately $34 million and additional $3.5 million in learning loss mitigation funds. Both of those funding sources have been expended in accordance with their expiration date, and so that's why those are on our separate table. So those have been fully expended. All that top table is looking at funds that are still available to be allocated moving into the budget year. Also of note is that on our executive summary for the 2122 adopted budget, we will be including an additional table from School Services of California that has a summary matrix of the various COVID-19-related funding sources and has more detail there as well. Next slide, please.
If I can just interject very quickly, board members, I do want to acknowledge that this is a format that we are going to ask you to become familiarized with. This is a template that we have adopted from the Council of Great City Schools. So these slides are just reflective of the way that we would like to continue to bring back updates with respect to these funds. In addition, you'll see this toward the end, but we do think that it would be valuable for us to include this information on our website so that our community also becomes familiarized with this format of reporting to you updates on how these funds are being monitored. And then you'll see in the next couple of slides the categories of the funds that we have thought about creating, and then monitoring again the allocations for each of those categories. So any feedback would be welcome as well.
Thank you, Superintendent. This next slide is our proposed timeline for the spend down of our COVID-19 funding sources. So essentially, what this looks at is it takes the balance available or the reward available for each of these funding sources and looks at the timeframe that we have to spend those funds. So for example, if we were to look at the AB-86 that wrote to there for the expanded learning opportunities grant, in total, we had about a $28.5 million allocation. And looking at, if we take the timeframe from July 1, 2021, through its expiration date of August 30, 2022, it's about 14 months. So divide that $28 million into 14 months, we'd have to spend about $2 million dollars a month in order to meet that expiration deadline for those funds. So we took that same methodology and spent it across all of these different resources, except for SRO-3. The difference with SRO-3 is that it has a further timeline, it has an expiration date of September 30, 2024. So we do have a little more flexibility of how we allocate those funds for each fiscal year. In total, as you can see, the total allocation per year is about $84.2 million. So that number essentially represents how much we would have to spend each year to make sure that we're staying on target with meeting the expiration dates of all of these various funding sources. So in total, across the four years, it'd be $274 million, approximately, and that ties back to the table from the previous slide. And in fiscal year 2024, '25, the $21 million represents the slide spillover from the SRO-3 funds because that expires September 30, 2024, so three months' worth of expenditures there. And of course, this is just based off of a trend, or excuse me, based off of a projection to even distribution, and it will be updated as we further refine our plan as our needs change based off of our actuals. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Rose. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. And this is just continuing, next slide, please. This is continuing the same slide that Jesse shared, only in a different format. This is now sharing with you all the different categories the Superintendent spoke about earlier. And these categories are taken from the requirement for spending, the different areas that we're supposed to be allocating, or we can allocate some of the funds for. And so the methodology for this, before I get into the number part, is that we came up with to distribute the funds over the next three point, you know, few months, years, is that we looked at a couple of things. We looked at actual expenditures to date, and we know it's about a year. We don't have a whole lot of trend analysis on this because obviously, this is a new environment we're operating in. And then we also looked at the ELO plan. That is probably our best looking forward plan that we have now. There was a lot of thought put into that. And then we also considered a new category. The Superintendent talked about that a little bit. It's the support staff that we're going to need in order to assist with implementing the use of these funds, and we'll go into more detail on that in a future slide as well. And then, of course, we just have a note there that says that, you know, this is our best estimate for allocating over the various categories based on some of these factors. But we know that, you know, things may not land precisely as displayed here, and so we will probably, you know, most likely have to make modifications, especially in those areas where we're probably not spending on target, and where other areas have a greater need, there may be a shift. And so as we bring updates to you, we will also bring updates on how we're trending with respect to some of these targeted amounts that we have listed here. So there's six categories that are listed here, and the biggest one being the learning initiatives. And I'd like to also share with the public and the board that within the executive summary that supports this particular board item, we have a more detailed list for each of these categories. There are subcategories that define the types of items that fall under learning initiatives. For example, that would be things like items like the extended instructional learning time, accelerated learning programs, integrated support, our learning hubs, et cetera. And so for each of these major categories, there's, you know, various subcategories there. And these are based on items and areas that we've already been spending on, and possible areas that we're projecting to spend on. So I just wanted to let you know that they're not, you know, these are just, they're very broad here, but it's just for purposes of PowerPoint. So that we have learning initiatives, school safety and COVID mitigation, about 10% there, and with 40%, I apologize, going to the learning initiatives are our biggest chunk. And then 15% on social emotional, 15% on technology initiatives, 15% on facility projects and upgrades, and the final 5% with support staff. And again, these are estimates, and they're projections that are subject to change. And so we took those figures that Jesse shared with you, that $84.2 million per year, you know, to stay on spending target that we would allocate every year, and we applied those percentages to that $84 million to come up with some spending amounts. And this is going to also allow the district to plan accordingly and to know, you know, more or less how much they're going to have to spend in that area, so that going forward, they will be able to go ahead and start implementing initiatives or programs or making purchases that are pretty close to those dollar amounts. And they may find that, you know, that amount is not sufficient, or that it's too much, and then at which time we'll make some adjustments. But we needed to put together a framework in order to help guide us going forward because up until, you know, recently, we were expecting that we were going to be out of this COVID environment, you know, very soon, like even last summer. And so it was very difficult to try to, you know, foresee the future and to plan for any kind of framework for spending out, you know, three and a half years. So now we've done this with, you know, the little bit of trending that we have, and again, you know, we'll update as needed. So looking across, this allocates that full $273.9 million that Jesse shared with you that has not yet been spent. So next slide, please. And then, this is just a reminder, I apologize, this PowerPoint do not carry over very well, but it's overlaying some a board policy number, Board Policy 3100. We're just sharing this again with our public. This past March, our board took action to modify or revise one of our business and non-instructional operation board policies to add language regarding the use of one-time funds. And the purpose of doing this is to protect the district from allocating one-time funds on an ongoing basis without any kind of exit plan or any other funding source for these expenditures. And this will protect the district from increasing its deficit. As you know, many of those reports and analysis that were done on the district's past budgets indicated that one of the issues was the use of one-time funding sources on ongoing expenditures without any kind of exit plan or without a substitute or replacement funding source. And so the board came up with this board policy to prevent the district from finding itself in that situation again, that speaks to how we use one-time funding, that they should be used for one-time expenditures only, and that on, you know, and if there's exceptions, the board will be aware of what those exceptions are. And in addition to that, that as we present any budgets for the coming year, that the district will present to the board and the public an exhibit that clearly identifies the one-time sources that are within the budget along with their uses. And so next week, we'll be presenting to you all the proposed budget for the coming year, and you will see this information listed in there. So again, just wanted to remind our public of that these funds are one-time funds, so all these expenses that you're seeing, that you will see this evening proposed, and those that you've seen in the past, will have to go away once these funds are gone, unless we have a funding source to replace them, of course. And with that, now I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer, Christine Bieda.
Good evening, President Pritchett, members of the board, and Superintendent Aguilar. Now let's get into, we heard a lot about the numbers, let's start to talk about kids, our students, and how we're going to integrate our services and supports to take good care of our students as we come through this pandemic and move forward. So we're looking at '21, '22, and beyond. So tonight, we're going to share with you some big buckets of spending categories that you can link back to some of the information that we heard from Chief Business Officer and her team. We're going to talk about our students and their well-being, ways that we're caring for them with these funds that address attendance and why that's important, the importance of climate for our students, and how we'll be improving that using these dollars. Most important always, all of this leads to improvement in academics for our students. We're going to share with you this evening some positions that we'd like the board to consider. And then also, and we have this on the bottom because we want to make sure that our community, our board, and we all understand that the importance of facilities, technology, administration, and operations holds all of the above together to make sure that we're caring for our students as a whole. Next slide, please. I'd also like us to think for a moment as we think about the underlying strategy for ensuring that we are effectively using these dollars to care for our students. We need to think about, and I know not one of us has forgotten for a moment, the kind of trauma that this year has brought for our staff and for our students. Our kids, more than ever, need next school year and the school years beyond that to be the very best years that Sac City Unified has ever been able to give our community. We have a strategy that ensures that we are integrating, weaving together, or you'll see our graphic representing the puzzle pieces to put together a care plan for our students. Not one single, one of these buckets, or one of these types of strategies, a position, or even an idea will ever be enough to help us manage through what we need to care for right now for our students. So let's talk about how we're going to move forward and make sure we're caring for our kids. Next slide, please. You've heard us talk about MTSS. MTSS stands for Multi-Tiered System of Support. This is our foundational strategy. Continue to think about this as weaving a very tight fabric for each and every student that meets the need of each and every student. And then if something happens for that student, in their family, their life, whatever it happens to be, when something else falls on that fabric, it's tight enough to hold that student up and keep them rising, accelerating them forward. And you'll hear us as we go through tonight, talking through all of our strategy from the perspective of how each and every piece fits together to blend into this fabric to strengthen what we're doing for our students. As a reminder, MTSS is a framework. It is not an initiative. It is not one more thing. It blends together all of the work that's happening at our sites in a very strategic data-based decision-making way to make sure that the right supports are going to the right students at the right time, and that we can also assess how is that cadre, that grouping of supports, supporting that particular student? Do we know it's working? And do we have the evidence to know that it's working? Multi-tiered system of supports is not just tiers of support. It is shared leadership. It's site teams doing what they need to do based on what they have at their school. It will not look the same at any two schools, but you will see that there's shared leadership and shared voice in decision-making and understanding what's happening for our students. MTSS does engage with tiered systems of support for all areas of caring for kids, academics, positive behavior supports, making sure that we get kids to school. We know that our kids vote with their feet. We need to create environments that make our kids want to be with us. And then, of course, the social and emotional supports that we know our students need. We'll talk a little bit about the tiers of support that are completely aligned to the needs of our students as well as our standards. Next slide, please. I also wanted to share for you from some really important reports that we bring to you that you've read and that we hear from our community, cries to make sure that we keep on the forefront of our thought process and decision-making. This one comes from our systemic instructional review, which was completed through the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence. One quote from that report that leads us to know that we need to do our decision-making with an MTSS framework is, "This use of database decision-making through MTSS that will help the district to move to creating that alignment and consistency." That means each and every student getting what they need to implement standards aligned, curriculum, learning, social, emotional, and behavior supports across schools. You see this integrated theme moving through our work as well as this recommendation from CCEE. The next slide, please, moves into a report that's been a part of our history since 2017. This comes from the Council of Great City Schools. One of their recommendations was embed MTSS into the districts, and listen to this year, blueprint for 2020, making it explicit how this strategic plan's provisions fit into this MTSS framework. Listen to this next sentence. "Make clear that the framework includes all students, including students with disabilities, English learners, and accelerated learners." MTSS cares for all of our students. And then this next slide is that constant reminder of that Capitol of Suspensions report. There are recommendations in there that we are working toward each and every day, and this one I wanted to highlight for the board this evening. They recommend that we initiate district-level plans to reduce suspensions that identify areas in need of attention, specify planned interventions, and track the effectiveness of these interventions over time. That is MTSS. Next slide, please. These critical components that I want to make sure we are constantly aware of also, MTSS is not just multiple tiers of instruction and intervention. It involves a common problem-solving process, data use and evaluation with those site-based shared leadership teams, ensuring that we have clear and coherent communication and collaboration, that we're building capacity and infrastructure, and we're building leadership. When you see and hear all of this work that we need to do together, it's really clear that we're going to need some positional support to ensure that this robust MTSS framework can be exactly what we need for each and every student. Next slide, please. I'd like to share where we're at with MTSS. We started this year in a pandemic. We promised that we would move through this year and do everything we could to move forward and move to a place that was better. We wanted to reopen our schools and reopen better. And we've worked all through this year on beginning our work with MTSS. We've worked on ensuring that at the central office level and through our sites, we're gaining a common language and common understanding of MTSS. That's very important so that we have the strength to sustain this over time. We have a three-year phased-in model. I'll share in a moment that we have a 25-school cohort one that has gone through some training. And continue to remember that all of our work with MTSS is going much slower than any of us would like it to be moving. But that's how we will ensure that this is systemic, sustainable, both in our work and in mindset and in support, and that it's scalable across each and every school and reaches each and every student. Next slide, please. So we have 25 schools that went through our training this year. They created database decision-making teams at those sites. Those sites went through 10 half-days of professional learning on all six of those critical components of MTSS that we saw previously. They even moved into working with problem-solving with their own data, and they're starting to prepare for full implementation at school next school year. Next slide, please. It's really clear, too, and as we think about next year and the years moving forward, in our next year, we'll have another group of students and schools coming forward. And then in a third year, we'll have all 75 schools in our MTSS training model. But as we move through this year and next, there are elements of the multi-tiered systems of support that we're bringing forward for all of our students. So even though we have this first cohort, we wanted to assure the board and the community that being that MTSS is so important to taking care of our students and effectively utilizing this funding opportunity, that we're working to accelerate our learning post-pandemic for all of our students with this model. And now I'd like to turn it over to one of our superheroes, Victoria Flores, our Director of Support and Student Health Services, who's going to take you through some of this puzzle piece you see at the top that shows us that we're going to think about well-being, and think about each puzzle piece fitting together to support each child.
Thank you, Chief Bieda. And Ms. Flores, if I can just interject real quickly, I would just want to pause for a few minutes here and encourage the board. This, too, is going to be another infographic that we're going to ask that you become familiarized. We're going to continue to present this infographic to you as we talk about the important investments that we have to make and how those elements surround the child, if you will, the whole child. And I'm going to encourage our board, as you hear now from Ms. Flores, and we start to introduce you to different job classifications, if you will, that we're very interested in using some of these one-time funds to either invest in because they are new positions, in some cases, they are a refined position, refining the job description, and in some cases, they're new positions. So I'm asking the board, as I indicated to our team, that you are going to hear from different staff members who have expertise in each of these different areas, that you not just trust their expertise, but that you feel comfortable asking questions about why it is that we are talking about a variety of job classifications and how do they fit into this puzzle? Because as you would hopefully imagine, each of those puzzles, in order for us to be successful in providing the right supports, require different levels of expertise, different types of expertise, different credentials as well. So I really want to encourage the board to feel comfortable interjecting and asking any questions of our staff as you hear different job classifications that you may not have paid attention to or that you're not aware, that, again, currently exist. We may be bringing as new job descriptions, or we may be modifying job descriptions as well, so.
Thank you so much for that, Superintendent. And I love that we were pausing on well-being because this really is something that we all need to attend to for ourselves, and as Chief Bieda, you know, said so beautifully, for the children that we care for. So if we can move to the next slide. Thank you. Thank you. As we, so as we look to that ongoing residual trauma that Chief Bieda spoke about of COVID-19, that's really impacted so many of our students, our families, and our staff, and that I just want to take a moment and say is still happening. We're not yet through this. We know that there's been a lot that's, that's gone on, and there is a lot of need. But I also want to draw your, your hearts and your minds to the need that existed even before the pandemic layered on top. So even before the pandemic started, 70% of mental health support services for our students was happening in schools. This is nationally, across our nation. And 20% of children have an identifiable mental health need, yet only one-third of them actually get the help they need. So hold that in your mind. A third of those students get it, but of that third, 70%, it's happening in our schools. And then as we layer on top the pandemic, looking at the beginning of April of last year, emergency room visits for mental health increased 24% for ages five to 11. That's a kindergartner, a first grader, a second grader, all the way up to fifth grade. And as we look to, you know, 31% increase for our kind of like pre-adolescent to adolescent age range, 12 to 17. Those figures, as a parent and as a social worker and just a community member and someone who has dedicated their life to caring and supporting families, really hits, hits our heart hard. Next slide, please. So as we look to all of this increased funding and we look to MTSS and how can we help support this need, we really lean on an existing, you know, a system that we had already created called our Equity Indices. And so this is a fairly simple concept of taking the support that's provided based on identifiable student needs, data-driven decision-making here, right? And using that data to allocate the resources where the student need is greatest. Next slide, please. So as we've looked at this, our, our need rating is based on the staffing ratio for the number of students enrolled with the following risk indicators. And so attendance is a really big one for us even pre-pandemic. But during this pandemic, we know, as, as Chief Bieda said, our students voted with their feet. And so did our families, and some of them really disengaged. So this has become a really important metric for us. We also look at behaviors. We look at suspensions, as we saw in that capital of suspension report, and our behavior referrals. And it gives us this weighted formula for each school that equates to a student need and a staffing ratio. And that's how we can start to make some of these decisions based on equity and not just because that's what we've always done or available funding or so have you. Next slide, please. So as we look at, at, you know, this action and we're moving, we're really trying to move from this inequitable distribution of resources, you know, based on like you'll see in this top, top left-hand corner, based on grant funding or site discretionary funding, moving our system over to this equity-based system of increasing our centralized funding and really pushing those resources out to our sites where our students have the most need. And so you can see currently, we have 28 sites that have a support center. And every year, this fluctuates, fluctuates based on the grants we get or any other discretionary funding to moving over now to all 75 school sites, having some level of support staffing based on need, based on that equity indices. So this is a really exciting moment for us to, to really lean into this process. Next slide, please.
If I can just interject, Ms. Flores, I just again want to just encourage the board for all of us to just pause a little bit and think of these data points from the lens of equity access and social justice. Why is it that our current reality has this very salient inequity where 28 of our schools have some supports for our students and the others do not? And principals who are negotiating with one another to split the roles of these really critical positions? And I'll tell you, when I first got here and we adopted and developed these equity indices, I mean, that was one of the first areas that I was able to understand and appreciate is that we had a budget structure that even though we could see this kind of data point, we could use early warning system data of attendance, behavior, academic well-being. And, and I had to basically accept that those were inequities that we couldn't really do anything about, that we could identify school sites where the data were telling us that a social worker would, would greatly benefit our students and families in such school, for example. And our budget structure would not allow us to invest in those, in those types of positions. And so I just appreciate the work of our staff and the commitment of our staff. And you can sense the excitement of bringing to life those equity indices in our proposal for the use of these funds to hopefully close at least on a one-time basis for a couple of years, this, this very grave inequity in our system and in our community.
Thank you so much. That was so well said. And so as we look to our support center staff, we know we've got coordinators and school social workers out there. Currently, we only have 16 assigned to school sites, spread among that 28 school sites, as well as our district-wide centralized supports, our connect center that you know so well. And, and we know that that unmet physical and mental health need, we talked about that data before, really impacts our ability, our children's ability to learn, to engage and attend school, and to interact with their, their peers, to really fully experience that, their education. And so how we can increase these supports to our students through these positions is number one, better coordination of services, really diving into that MTSS process of making sure that we are addressing all of the needs and using every team member to do that. Providing that psychoeducation and skill building. It's not just that medical model of needing to go to therapy. We can really pull on all of those natural supports and recreation, faith, arts, music, all of those areas. Of course, we do also provide individual, you know, counseling and, and group or family counseling. We really lean on our community-based partners for these services and supports as well. And then a whole host of other supports, including suicide risk assessment, crisis intervention, home visits, and a lot of parent engagement. We really have to support that, that parent and the family unit who then support our children. Next slide, please. So we are also looking at this parity that student board member Shayk and I have talked about in mental health and physical health, because that is well-being, right? And so looking at health services, again, we see these same parallels of inequitable systems of funding, uneven site allocations or department allocations that are creating uneven caseloads and services and supports for our students. Moving that over back to centralized funding, really looking at those equity indices. We have a similar equity indices in health services that's really grounded in the health needs of our students and how we allocate FTE. And so if you look down to that, that bottom left, you're going to see that nurse-to-student ratio currently, because of this system that we've set up is about 1 to 3,000. And so that really drives our school nurses to be working on the most intensive needs or mandates. And if we're able to add that additional staffing, we're talking about halving their ratios and really helping our practitioners focus on what they do and know best, which is public health prevention and early intervention. Next slide, please. So we currently have about 19.6, roughly, you know, 20 school nurses assigned to TK through 12 schools with that large focus on mandated services, really compliance-driven. And I just want to share that, that our school nurses are public health experts and their heart and their soul is in prevention and early intervention. And that's really their expertise. That's where they shine. Yet the way our system is set up, that's really not the big focus of what they get to do. So if we were to add that additional staffing, that direct support would include that overall healthcare promotion, education, access and referral coordination, health screenings that are so critical, making sure our students can see and hear and aren't in pain, you know, from dental pain. And if any of you have been in one of those vision screenings, that was me in sixth grade getting pulled over to the side. I had no clue I couldn't see, but it was a school nurse who identified it, not my parents. And I'm forever grateful for that. Of course, they're managing infectious diseases. COVID has taken over our whole department. But every year, we do this around norovirus or flu or any other situations like that. And then, of course, managing those chronic health conditions, things like asthma, anaphylaxis, you know, or allergies and diabetes, so that we can increase attendance and really support that academic success. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Husher to talk about school climate.
Thank you, Victoria. Appreciate that. So good evening. My name is Doug Husher. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support. I'm here tonight to share information about PBIS as it relates to the CARES proposal. And I think this, this next puzzle piece is calling attention to that. This is the school climate piece. So this is the third piece you're seeing tonight. And I think Victoria and Christine have done a great job just building this message of this very thoughtful web of support that our students need and deserve. And you're going to see this in this next section too through PBIS. So Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, otherwise known as PBIS. It's a framework that focuses on evidence-based prevention and intervention practices. When done right, PBIS promotes school effectiveness. We see greater school efficiency and we see equity in our schools. PBIS works because it creates a culture getting everyone at a school site on the same page in terms of developing common expectations, in terms of explicitly teaching those expectations, regularly reviewing the data to identify problem areas on school campuses, and using tiered interventions to address issues. PBIS also works because it helps better understand where there may be gaps in our adult practice. Next slide, please. So why is this important? As, as you can see from this slide, there's a plethora of research-based benefits from PBIS that are well documented. Among, chief among them is a reduction in disproportionate discipline. We all know disproportionate discipline is a practice or is something that's occurred in our district and many districts. And it starts to pave the way to the school-to-prison pipeline. So if we can interrupt that, we've certainly done a great, moved in, in the right direction. We also know PBIS helps reduce challenging behaviors in students. We see a reduction in bullying. And we know our schools are much safer places when that reduction of bullying happens. We see more positive climate, more positive culture when students are surveyed, when families are surveyed. We see an improved perception, like I said, of safety from all those that are surveyed. We also see increased academic performance. We know when there's clarity in what is expected, when there's appropriate behavioral supports, when there's the same expectations for students, achievement increases. There's more time to focus on learning. And we also know that our SEL, our social emotional competencies are stronger. They're more complete. Schools that focus on PBIS, they're just better places to learn. They're happier places, school climate is richer. I might mention that Ms. Bieda was principal at two sites. I was principal at three sites. If there was any success that we enjoyed as principals at those sites, it was largely because we had staffs that were committed to the principles of PBIS. And when staffs are committed to PBIS, we see success. I should also mention that PBIS does more than just benefit our students. It also pays dividends for the adults to free them up to teach more. Some of those benefits include the teachers and educators. Everyone at the school site feels safer. There's a reduction in staff turnover. We know turnover at our school sites is a huge challenge and it's hard to be consistent in what we do and to build a culture and climate when there's huge turnover. And so PBIS helps reduce that turnover. We know that administrators have increased time to focus on instructional leadership. All the research tells us the value of administrators that focus on instruction and have time to spend in the classroom and time to support their teachers. And we know, last but not least, there's greater job satisfaction of the adults in our system when they work at sites that have strong PBIS tenants. And when there's greater job satisfaction, everybody wins. So it's easy to see why we would want our own kids, and all students for that matter, attending a PBIS school. Next slide, please. So the CARES proposal identifies additional support needed for PBIS to grow its roots and to take PBIS to scale. This is one of several components needed to build this web of intervention and support for our students. Currently, we don't have a roadmap for scaling PBIS. A handful of schools have participated in PBS training over a 15-year period probably in this district. PBIS hasn't always had the stickiness factor, I call it, with changes in site administrators or inconsistent support or even a missing central office approach to successfully scale it up across the district. Currently, there are six schools in training with our partner, the Placer County Office of Education in PBIS. They're in year two. These schools are supported by a single PBS coach, Shawna Bersky. She's outstanding, doing phenomenal work. But supporting these schools and a handful of other sites is difficult with great demand for support and no district expectation that all schools rely on PBS for their foundational behavioral practices. We know that our district struggled in the past with an opt-in culture. This holds true for PBIS as well. In spite of what we know about the benefits of PBIS, we have not had the bandwidth to take PBIS to all of our schools. So what would we like to do? We would like to introduce PBS to all of our 25 cohort-one MTSS schools next year. We would like to hire additional PBS coaches and embed them in the day-to-day work and practices of the schools they support. These coaches would help establish administrative leadership around PBIS. They would help develop team-based implementation. There are core tenants that define PBIS, and they would play a key role with those tenants. They would teach behavioral expectations. They would acknowledge reward structures for students as well as staff. They would monitor and correct behavior errors. They would use behavior data for decision-making. And they would build parent collaboration, all super important things to a healthy school culture. As called out in the capital of school suspension report, we know that we've struggled with disproportionate discipline, with exclusionary practices, and with school pushout. And in this report, one school, Cesar Chavez, was called out for having the greatest percentage suspension of African-American students in the state of California. Cesar Chavez began its PBS work in 2019-20. Up until the pandemic, for school closure in March of 2020, the school had reduced its suspension by 96%. Again, the first year of implementation of PBIS, a reduction in their suspension numbers by 96%. That's a tribute to the commitment and the power of PBS and the staff to the tenants of PBIS. We see positive growth for our other PBIS sites as well. In 18, from 1819 to 1920, suspensions at the elementary level for all PBIS sites decreased by 47% and at the secondary level by 43%. We have a historic opportunity to make some big moves that will support our students in huge ways. We can support PBS in a way that allows us to go deep and scale up. We've already built the structure of NTSS, a chassis, if you will, to carry this work. We have leadership teams. We have these teams beginning to look more deeply at their data. And we're developing a better understanding of the tiered interventions. All these are integral parts of PBIS and they fit perfectly with MTSS. Next slide, please. So in summary, we have one training specialist right now supporting all the PBS work in this district, and that's abysmally low, the support. And we know that six schools currently being trained in PBIS is very few schools when we think about our 76 sites. We also know that through this approach that we would like to take, we could provide ongoing coaching support with coaches actually embedded in school sites. We know that's the most effective form of coaching there is. We know that we would need to progress monitor to make sure that the stickiness factor that I mentioned holds tight. As Ms. Bieda said, we need to see evidence to know something is working. So we would closely be monitoring the data to make sure that PBIS implementation achieves what it sets out to. And last, we'd want to differentiate support based upon the needs we see. Our sites look different, feel different, and we want to make sure the support is differentiated. And with additional coaches, we could do that. PBS support will remove barriers and prevent many students from experiencing school success. Those barriers that prevent students from experiencing success. Combined with intervention teachers, nurses, social workers, others, PBS coaching support is one strand of this comprehensive web of support that we are proposing that we think is very important. At this time, I'd like to turn this over to Jennifer Kretschman to share with you about attendance.
Thank you so much, Doug. So first slide, please. I love connecting the dots. I didn't realize that Cesar Chavez was a first-year PBIS school. But that same year, they also had a huge reduction in chronic absenteeism. I wish I had those numbers, but I didn't know who was going to be speaking to that. So it just further reinforces the need for all of these supports and all of these supports working together. So this year, next slide, please. There you go. So why a focus on attendance support? This year, during the pandemic and up until now, attendance has become so much more both in definition and in practice. So our team here, it's the Be Here team, we haven't taken any time off, and we've become a central hub for all sorts of things that aren't traditionally associated with attendance. Connectivity and hotspots, internet, computers, technology. You can see this little girl who was receiving a computer that we had delivered to her. I think that was last summer, but we've been delivering them all the way up until right now. Because as I'm sure you know, kids lose them, they get broken, and we have plenty to make sure that they have a device to learn on right away. We man the engagement support line. So that's 916-643-2121. You can give us a call about attendance, engagement, connectivity, and call us about anything, actually, and we'll make sure someone gets your message. We interpret new laws and guidelines so that they make sense. We communicate and teach staff to students and families as quickly and as best we can, all while trying to implement a brand-new attendance and engagement support plan because we need to meet the needs of the requirements of the grant that funds our office. So why is it a focus? And it seems really logical, right? Because if kids don't show up, either virtually or in person, they just can't learn. They can't learn what's being taught. They don't socialize. There are a lot of other things, though. The research shows that attendance is key to academic success. In fact, it's one of the leading indicators of student success and graduation. That's above test scores and above grades, attendance. Chronic absenteeism, that's our new term. We measure chronic absenteeism over truancy, and that means a student missing 10% or more of their enrolled school days. And that's just two days a month. The chronic absenteeism has been linked to social disengagement and feelings of alienation. And that brings us right back to Victoria and Student Support Services, providing the mental health services and wellbeing support. Over the long term, chronic absence is found to be correlated, I'm not there yet, almost, is found to be correlated with increased rates of high school dropout, negative health outcomes, and high poverty rates in adulthood. These risks, coupled with the consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic, have greatly impacted our most vulnerable students. It disproportionately affects all of our vulnerable student groups. So students of color, English language learners, students with disabilities, and students from low-income communities. When chronic absence affects large numbers of students, it is typically a sign of systemic failures that prevents students from getting to school. So this includes larger systems like transportation, poor health, and housing displacement. Or it could be practices that push students out of school settings, including biased disciplinary policies and a lack of teachers who reflect cultures, ethnicities, and languages of the student population. Again, this just reinforces the need for PBIS and other supports around behavior. Student absence also equal the loss of ADA and school funding. So this is the kicker, right? We rely almost solely on student attendance to fund the entire district. There, we have some other funding sources, but almost entirely on ADA. We must invest in attendance, right? So it seems pretty obvious that attendance would be a crucial component to bolster and build while we can, while we have the funds. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now are they? The history of attendance in our district is telling. At some point in the district, we had a robust attendance office. It was before my time. You can look at our ADA over the years and watch it slowly decline from about 2012 on, and you can realize that attendance was no longer a focus. In 2012, the district worked with UC Davis, so that was Victoria's department, worked with the UC Davis Center for Regional Change to study chronic absenteeism. Those findings resulted in 2017, the district applying for the LCSSP Prop 47 grants. So we were awarded that three-year grant, and we launched the Be Here Attendance Awareness Campaign. So our goal was to reduce chronic absenteeism. O'Neil and I were hired, and we worked hard to create and implement an attendance improvement program that supported just 20 sites. Over those three years, we saw many successes and an overall reduction in chronic absenteeism. In 2020, we again applied and were awarded the LCSSP grant for the second time. This was to continue the work that we had started. We were named an exemplar program. We presented our work at many webinars and conferences nationwide. But then COVID happened and changed everything. I believe it gave us an opportunity, though, one to collaborate more, to break down the silos and expand the work we were doing with attendance to become engagement. We now have four full-time staff with a goal of supporting all 75 sites. Next slide. How can we make attendance more equitable? This is a central theme. Attendance right now as we know it is not equitable. This is clear based on the numbers of Black and Brown students who are chronically absent. Right now, in our district, African-American students have the third-highest rate of chronic absenteeism, next to homeless, or students experiencing homelessness and foster youth. So we have to change this now. What can we do? So first and foremost is what we're talking about here. We're using MTSS and database decision-making. So those practices of getting a team together, looking at data, and providing interventions to reduce chronic absence. Then we can focus on relationships and positive relationships in a warm, welcoming climate. That's that PBIS, right? Third, we need to provide all stakeholders, primarily our sites, with access to timely, accurate, and actionable data. We have to know where we are in order to improve. And last, we need to work to remove the systemic barriers. We must work to remove them at the system level. Is school accessible to all students? Do all students have access to high-quality education at their neighborhood school? They should. In a truly equitable system, parents wouldn't have to enroll and send their kids across town to good schools. We need to take action now. Next slide, please. So what does an attendance support plan look like? Right? Your kids just go. I wish it were that easy. It looks like what we're talking about here. All of these actions today that you have heard about, in addition to these things. So our office will provide technical assistance to all sites. That's quarterly trainings, updated toolkit, an attendance manual. Whatever they need, we will do. We have open office hours. The goal is that everyone will be a wealth of information when it comes to attendance. We have a peer learning network. And what that is, is we have staff, usually over 100. That's principals, community-based organizations, community partners, attendance clerks, attendance specs, social workers. They attend a peer learning network for an hour and a half each month, and it's a, it's a great source of information. We have experts that present. It's something we want to be able to continue. We have student support. So we have two child welfare and attendance specialists right now in our office. They provide case management, team home visits. They help with engagement support plans. They do whatever it takes to support school sites in improving attendance at the student level. We have our youth campaign. You are all familiar with our lovely Be Here media team. They have done amazing work and are continuing to do amazing work. Next year, we will have more rallies and we can meet in person. Our social media campaign is flourishing. I'm excited to get back to school so that they can really take engagement to the next level. And then we have that actionable and reliable data implementation and monitoring. So these are our attendance teams. This is the action at the school sites. Having those MTSS teams that get together, talk about attendance, and provide interventions that work for the students at the right time, in the right place, in the right way. And if they don't work, we stop them. We don't continue, and then we try something more. Next slide. So this is a quick, easy slide, right? I was talking to Cecilia of Attendance Works, and she was telling me the results of a recent study of attendance during COVID. So nationwide, chronic absence rates doubled in most districts. It nearly, I'm sorry, chronic absence rates nearly quadrupled for Black and Brown students. In our district right now, our district chronic absence rate is 15.5%. Or it was 15.5%, and now it's 18.6%. So we've only gone up three percentage points, so about 25%. We are doing amazing work. And that's with a small office, very bare bones. We are working and we are tired, but we are doing everything we can to continue to support our students and get them to school. So what can we do with a fully-staffed office? Next slide. Our goal is to staff our office with child welfare and attendance specialists. They are amazing people who do all sorts of great things. We would align each CWAS, is what we call them, CWAS, with an IAS, so they would support a region of schools. We would buck feeder schools. They would be able to implement attendance practices at an elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, so that they were all consistent and they worked together collaboratively. They would be able to monitor and assess attendance and engagement data regularly. And that's both at the site level and also here at the district's level. They would be able to engage in cycles of continuous improvement. Same thing at the site level, working on SIPSAs, LCAP, and then also here at the district's level. They would be able to provide differentiated support to the vulnerable student groups. We would have, if we could, a CWAS who focused solely on working with students who are experiencing homelessness in our foster youth. And then we would also increase and improve restorative SARS. That's something new. We haven't had SARS this year. And we are not going to bring them back if they are punitive. We are working hard to restore them or to bring them back and have them be restorative and helpful and also still virtual. We found that we have been able to engage with our parents virtually this year via Zoom. So why not continue that practice into next year? If it's working and they can attend, we want to keep it that way. So I think I will turn it over now. I'm not sure who's next. Let's see, next slide. There we go. Ms. Christine Bieda.
Well, and perfect segue because in addition to doing all that amazing work with our Be Here team and in our attendance office, Jennifer Kretschman is also our Director of Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. She's our Director of MTSS. And I'm, I'm proud to have this be our last puzzle piece in. We've heard about wellbeing and the importance of school climate and attendance. And remember that all of that is in service of our ensuring that every one of our kids is learning to read, that they're achieving at high levels academically, and that we're accelerating them to the boundaries that they can possibly ever think that they could achieve. And so all of those puzzle pieces have to fit together. Next slide, please. I wanted to remind everyone that our academic office is comprised of all of our schools and many departments that support our schools and our sites. Historically, our departments and our schools do not necessarily have the staffing pre-pandemic or certainly now, listening and attending to all of the needs of our kids and our staff. That our sites and our schools do not have the staffing they need to really implement this robust MTSS framework, ensuring that we have what they need, when they need it, and that we can prove with data that that's what's really working. We now have this opportunity, putting all these pieces together. Specifically, this evening, I'd like to share with you in some of our departments in the academic office, in special education, in curriculum and instruction, and in our schools, to bring that staffing to ensure that all of our schools can support this MTSS framework as we move through our formal training and bringing this to each and every student. So now we're going to talk about some of the recommendations for positions that will help to weave this together for our students in the academic office. Next slide, please. First and foremost, and very aligned to what you heard from Victoria as she described the situation with our school nurses. Our school psychologists are so important to the success and health of our schools. Right now, we only have 34 school psychologists that are spread extremely thin across our schools and sites. Because they are spread so thin, what they typically are capable of doing is completing assessments, special education assessments, ensuring that they're writing effective reports, analyzing data, and helping IEP teams to move forward with that data and information. But they're so much more important to our schools and to our staff. And I can tell you, from the position of having spent more than 20 years working with my boots on the ground as a teacher, as a vice principal and a principal, we need our school psychologists and the magic that they really are able to work. We have to increase these positions. If we increase these positions, we can increase direct services to our students. We can ensure that our school psychologists are at the table during student-study-team processes. When we're looking at that data and we've come through our process with MTSS, and we have a group together studying what's been happening for the student, what interventions have been in place, what's working and what's not working, and what do we need to do next? We cannot do that effectively, and I'll admit, we're not doing it effectively without the value of the expertise of our school psychologists at that table every single time. And right now, there are so few, they don't have time. We need them to be able to collaborate with teachers, with principals, with parents, to build the capacity, because we know they can't be there every day, all day. But I learned as a school principal and vice principal so much from my school psychologist and having them available to me that even when they weren't there, I could then have the capacity to serve in their absence because they had time to be able to care for and teach me, both as a teacher and a site administrator. We need them to be able to provide those direct supports to services now more than ever. We also know that because of the pandemic and the learning differences that our children have been learning under, we expect that there will be even more requests for special education assessment and even more need. We've got to increase the number of school psychologists on our campuses to make sure that our students, our teachers, and our principals are all having the supports that they need. Next slide, please. Also in, in special education, as we increase our school psychologists, we know that we need somebody that would be a position of a lead school psychologist. This is a model that's in place in other nearby districts that has the expertise of that school psychologist. And now I'll segue also into the lead speech pathologist role that would have that expertise to be able to care for and support these groups of professionals. Right now, both of these large groups of very professional support providers in our system, they, they are supported by an ATL, an Administrator of Teaching and Learning, in our departments. But we want this new position to spec- But we want this new position to specifically care for their professional needs. The person would be able to understand their needs, supervise them more effectively, and care for problems that arise, to be able to better create stronger special education teams at schools and across the department. They'll be able to lead and know what we need in professional development by reaching out to these professionals, hearing what's needed, then designing and presenting specifically for those teams. We also know that we need their support as we move through our student-study-team process. These roles will also give our school psychologists and in the increased number of school psychologists, as well as our speech pathologists, additional time to be able to support students and do the work that we know they need to do. So these are two new positions that we're recommending that we move forward as we look at caring for our students with our CARES dollars. Next slide, please. And this is the last recommendation specifically in our special education department in the academic office. You heard Mr. Husher talk about the importance of positive behavior interventions and supports to ensuring that we have climates that are safe, predictable, healthy, and just the right PH for every student to thrive. As a school principal, I could not have achieved what we achieved without having those types of supports on our campuses. You heard Mr. Husher talk about the training specialist that would specifically be working in that PBIS department to put those supports on each and every campus, so that, again, we're building capacity. We know that those people cannot be there every single day, offering their expertise. But when we have their expertise, we can build the capacity of the site staff to better care for each other and the students. This particular role is very much needed in our system to be able to support across the continuum the needs of our students in a very positive way. Because they are board-certified, they have additional background and expertise in supporting behavior. They're able to go into schools, classrooms, and help to see if the environment is really meeting a particular student's needs. They can support us all the way from the very foundational beginning tiers of the MTSS thought process. And then they can follow students as we look to see if that support isn't enough, what more might they need? And perhaps most importantly, when we have something in place for a student, sometimes we put in place behavior support plans or we coach teachers or site administrators to be able to support positively to make that environment, again, just the right PH for a student that's having struggles. They can also come in and see, is this being implemented with fidelity? They can hear the teacher say, some of this is working and some of this is not. And because of their specialized training, they can get in there and really help to adapt, providing support all the way back to the PBIS, to those training specialists. But as we move through and potentially need support even into the IEP process, this group of very specialized educators can help with designing functional behavior programs for students. They can analyze the data and really ensure that across that whole spectrum of support, we're caring for students, making sure they have just what they need, and that what we provide is truly working. So this is a new position that we're recommending we bring forward to support teachers, administrators, and our students in our system, in our special education department. Next slide, please. Another department in the academic office that's very important to everything we do. And during COVID, this team has been working literally tirelessly. In our curriculum and instruction department, you may be shocked to learn that we have one single English Language Development Specialist to serve over twenty-five hundred secondary students. One, one person. We are recommending that we add another ELD Secondary Training Specialist to our curriculum and instruction department. All of our ELD training specialists are so important to improving the academic equity for our children. They support all of our EL learners and ensure that they have content access across all areas, and they do that by supporting teachers and, again, building capacity at the site level, supporting teachers. They work very, very closely with our other training specialists in other content areas to make sure that math instruction, English Language Arts instruction, science instruction, art instruction, that all of those areas are bringing forward with access for our EL students. And we've been doing this with one in secondary. They help teachers with training and support. They can help with designing and providing professional learning. And they can help with that data analysis and review that we keep talking about that is so important in our MTSS frame to make sure that what we're doing is really working for our students. Next slide, please. And as you know, our lives in the classroom have completely changed. And so I thank our teachers because they have been teaching with technology like never before. Some of our teachers will say, you know, they're very techie. And we have other teachers who have become so techie. But we need technology training specialists in our curriculum and instruction department to ensure that we can continue to provide academic equity for our students. These training specialists would be coaches. They're not, we do not have them currently in our system. These are coaches who can help teachers to enhance their instruction with all this technology that we've brought forward. Our teachers have learned things that we didn't even know that we needed to learn. And now when we are coming back more and more and more with our students in person, our teachers have skills and they need to be able to thrive with some of what they've learned. And they need these coaching specialists to be able to help them to question, to think about how to redesign for something that they're trying to do for students. They can ensure that the technology enhances the curriculum that we've adopted, making sure that intervention materials are accessible for students in new and exciting ways with some of the curriculum that we've bought, we've brought to our classrooms. They're going to help to design professional learning and enhance classroom support. Again, continuing to build capacity for all of our teachers as well as our site administrators so that we can really enhance our instruction with the technology learning and needs that we've acquired during this time. So we're recommending some training specialists. They would be led by our one and only Nova Katz. She is our Ed Technology Coordinator in our Curriculum and Instruction Department, who really has been a hero and kept us afloat. I don't know what we would do without Nova. And these training specialists would work very closely with Nova to continue to support our teachers in this specific area. Next slide, please. And then perhaps as we come to this particular slide, this is really moving toward an area of need at our sites. You heard Victoria speak about how some of our sites are able to purchase additional social worker support, additional nursing support, but it's not equitable and it has not been equitable. The same is true with academic intervention teachers, and I want to be really crystal clear here. I am not talking about a special education support teacher. I'm talking about an additional teacher who can come forward and ensure that student needs are met. And that might be that these teachers that we're recommending every school has access to now, every school having access to intervention. But intervention does not necessarily mean remediation. And we need to be really cautious about the words that we're using right now with our kids and our students as we continue to move forward. This person on a campus could offer to be with kids who have already acquired mastery with a standard or learning skill that a teacher is currently working on. If they take those kids in a small group because they've achieved mastery, now our credentialed teachers that know these kids intimately and better than anybody else can hone in on the needs of these students. We should always be ensuring that our kids who are struggling to learn or maybe didn't learn something they needed during this COVID learning experience, those kids need to be with their credentialed teacher that sees and knows their learning through the day, every single day. But this person, once offered to every school site, offers some opportunities for that classroom teacher to be able to provide interventions. While this person could be accelerating learning for other students in different ways, we really need all of our kids and all of our schools to have access to this level of support. Next slide, please. So we've put together for you the pieces of the puzzle that we recommend as we look at spending these dollars in equitable and important ways to support our kids. I hope that you can see how important that a multi-tiered system of support that's really based on data-based decision-making is for this work that we need to do right now for our students. Next slide, please. And I'd like Rose and somebody from her team to review this slide as we get ready to finish up with a few more thoughts for the board.
Absolutely. Thank you, Christine. And this slide is just going to put into a different perspective the same information that Christine was sharing about the added workload to the existing structure within the district and the existing staff. And just to give you a little bit of data, we are implementing about $280 million worth of expenditures, which is about fifty percent of the district's annual operating budget, assuming a budget of about $550 million. However, our staffing levels have not increased. We've still maintained the same level of staff. Our existing staff have done a tremendous job, but we've only spent about, as you saw in earlier slide, about forty or so million. And we still have 280 left to go. And that is going to be, you know, a phenomenal job to try to implement that with our existing staff. And there, it's not going to be possible to do that effectively. So as Christine was sharing, the district will require additional temporary support to assist with this implementation. And in our data, we were proposing about a five percent investment. Again, that's subject to flexibility. And we've listed for you some, but not all of the departments that have been impacted by this recent increase in implementation. Christine shared details on the academic office, health services, special education. And our human resources office is also being burdened with additional work in filling positions and screening applications, our legal services as well. And you've heard, gotten lots of data on our nutrition services that they've served so many more meals in this last year than ever before with the same number of staff. Our facilities and transportation department have also had to assume new duties in preparing our sites for not only mitigating the impact of COVID, but in moving around our furniture and being, and having to do that at just a moment's notice. Our staff worked very hard this past three-day weekend preparing all of our sites for the new spacing requirements. And safety and security, we've also had to quickly adjust to monitoring all of our sites, some of those that over this past year had not been occupied and making sure that they were being secured and not, you know, being subject to vandalism. And of course, there's technology. That other department has seen a tremendous increase in their workload and just having to quickly purchase tons of Chromebooks and expand our bandwidth and respond to all the troubleshooting district-wide. Prior to COVID, the district had some technology challenges. But now with this added layer of online learning and staff remote working and all of these Zoom meetings, they have really taxed our system. And our department, technology department, has had to quickly utilize their limited staff and trying to address these matters. And of course, there's accounting and budget, having to process the tons of requisitions that are coming our way and keeping up with the volume and trying to contact our vendors and competing with our neighboring districts so we can acquire all of those items and products that we need in a timely manner. And then finally, there's risk management. We have one person in our, and just to put in perspective, in our department, risk management, that is responsible for all of the thermal scans district-wide. So she's the one they call for troubleshooting and she has to spread herself then and run all over town and trying to make sure they're working. And it's so critical that those units be functional at all times. And we have one person that's dedicated to workers' comp and we've seen an increase in those cases due to COVID-related matters. And then finally, our other person is responsible for stocking and replenishing all of our PPE, our Protective Personal Equipment, district-wide. And that's a lot of mileage to cover and they're doing the best they can also to keep up. And so this, again, was just based on the limited resources we've got up front. So now you can imagine imposing $280 million on these departments is going to be quite, quite an undertaking and probably will not be possible without additional support. So with that, I'd like to turn it over back to Cecilia.
So you can hear with what Chief Ramos just shared, again, as I shared earlier, the whole foundation of being able to effectively, efficiently use these funds in ways that support our students. We have to have that undergirding facilities, technology, administration, operations. We need that support so that we can improve the well-being, attendance, climate, and academics for all of our students. Next slide, please. And we'd also like to share with you, just in summary, some next steps. We know that we need to come back to the board with an update on our HR processing for these new and existing positions. And so we'd like to come back and if you'll have us, share some additional information on those processes and how we're moving forward with all of these positions we spoke about this evening. We also, because we're using database decision-making and we are focused on our continuous cycle of improvement in all the work we're doing, we want also to come forward with our outcome metrics for the use of these COVID funds. How are we changing and improving outcomes for students based on these models that we're putting forward? Because we also need to think about, as we move through these next years, Chief Ramos shared multiple times, these are temporary positions, temporary funds. What will we need in our system when we think about sustainably having this MTSS framework and continuing to care for our students? Also, we know that we need to regularly update the board with budget expenditures so that you can see how we're continuing to move forward with what we're offering this evening. And then we intend to create a web-based interface for our COVID fund expenditures that makes it very easy for the board, our community, to be able to see this work that's happening with these dollars. And now I'd like to turn it over to the board or to public comment.
Thank you. I believe we have two live public comment.
Allison Cagney. Cagli, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right. I'm Allison Cagli. I'm Executive Director of Friends of Sacramento Arts. And I'm addressing two categories of funding that are listed in the executive summary of the COVID Relief Funds. The first one is the learning initiatives. And we propose that funding professional development for K-6 teachers focusing on arts education integration through the Kennedy Center's Any Given Child Professional Development Program and other external partners like the national firm Focus Five. In arts-integrated curriculum, the arts become the approach to teaching and the vehicle for learning. Teacher professional development is required to learn about art standards and how to connect the arts to the curriculum. Providing a sequential series of workshops with measurable goals over multiple years will ultimately impact will ultimately impact every elementary age student. The other area that I'd like to propose funding for is under the Social, Emotional, Mental Health and Support Services, and especially as it's focusing on MTSS. We propose to expand the contract with the Healthy Heart and Mind Collaborative that SAC City was a part of earlier this year, and also the Kennedy Center Any Given Child Program. As you may recall, the Healthy Heart and Mind Program is a collaboration with school principals and staff, mental health professionals and trained teaching artists created to address the current mental health crisis of our students. During this past school year, 15 schools in SAC City participated in the program and received 10,000 art kits, 66 hours of mentor and artist training, and 2,400 points of student contact. We propose that every school receive this program to use the arts as a connection to schoolchildren and their SEL needs. The Kennedy Center Any Given Child Program, which has been used throughout SAC City over the years, is a Tier One support for SEL and the arts. And it's a model that provides an entry-level set of access to the arts for all children. The district would contract for arts enrichment programs with a focus on providing these programs to Title I schools. Additionally, programs like Clara Classroom and other arts organizations can be included in a broader way of programs to best align with each school's needs and schedules. An annual commitment of a baseline of funds for the next three and a half years for each elementary school through the federal cares money will lay a foundation for a thriving arts education curriculum, thereby making a long-term commitment to adhering to the CDE arts education requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cagli.
Cherie Meyer? That completes the public comments.
Thank you. I have a few comments myself, but I saw Member Phillips had her sign up very early into the presentation, so I'll call on her first.
I was doing an acronym check. There were a lot going around. Yeah, specifically ELO, SSHS, and I believe I got the rest of them. But I did have a couple of questions. So I guess when we talk about equity, we're talking about using temporary, or what's the word, temporary funding in order to try to change equity. And I'm somewhat concerned about why we might be looking at two and a half years or so to make changes in decades of systemic issues. So I know that currently, like if I look at slide number 20, it talks about there's 28 school sites. I would love to know which schools those are. And I would also like to see how the distribution of funds would be made for the 75 school sites. And I know maybe next time that we can do that. I just want to know if it's, you know, if it's distributed in equal amounts. Sometimes that's not necessarily equity. That's equality and that doesn't necessarily work. So that's just a request. I had a couple of other questions. On PBIS, I guess that is something that's really important that we want to have paired up with MTSS. But again, temporary funding, how do we expect in the long run to have, to continue with the benefit that we might get from that? So maybe a little more information on how we're going to work in the future with PBIS? I don't have any more. Also, and it's possible, maybe we could have a breakout of like the positions that are needed versus the positions we already have and maybe cost those out. Perhaps that's for Rose. And I'll just leave it at that. If I have another question, I will come back. But mostly it's how are we going to move into the future with temporary funding for these programs?
I do want to ask our team to address some of the questions and we can of course follow up with more details via board communication. But I'll ask Victoria just to give an overview with respect to, for example, student support centers and the distribution of current schools that have those centers versus those that don't. And what is our vision for kind of a baseline approach for what all schools would have using these temporary funds? Just kind of highlight so that our board and our community can have a better understanding of what that looks like today, what it looks like today in schools that don't have it and what we're envisioning using again, one-time funds to close that inequity.
Yeah. Hi, Board Member Phillips. You bring up a really, really great point. And this was one that we really looked at deeply. So the 28 school sites are listed on our student support center website. I can send them to you. I don't want to, you know, list them all off, but they range from Hiram Johnson High School, Bret Hart, Father Keith B. Kenny, John Still, Rosa Parks. You know, a lot of the schools you might think and know, Pacific, thinking about schools in your area. And most of them started as healthy starts. So these go way back, right? 20, you know, some of them 20-plus years back to that healthy start model. And we've sustained them, but the system that we had to drive to sustain them did create these inequities of some sites can afford it and some don't. So when we looked at that equity indices, we looked at student need and we aligned that staffing FTE based on the need. So every school's going to get something, but those schools that have our students that have the highest needs will get the most. And that's how we look to break it down. And, you know, you can continue to mess with it as much as you kind of mess with the waiting. But that's how we were looking at it, from at least one day a week all the way up to two days or to a full, you know, someone every day. Sometimes maybe even two staff every day. And I'm thinking in terms of like a school like Hiram Johnson High School has two, you know, almost two fully funded staff this year. It's actually 1.8 that would, you know, bring them up. So that's the way we looked at it. We'd love to share those details with you.
Thank you.
I'll just mention, because I think it'll be a theme moving forward, Member Phillips, because your other question about how or why are we depending or using these one-time funds to try to address these issues that have been longstanding is a very, very good question, which is why we wanted to highlight the board's action in the board policy adoption of the use of one-time funds. In this case, I would just say that the district does not have the resources on an ongoing basis to be able to address these inequities. And as you heard, as the board and our community heard as part of our third interim period report, these funds aside, we are still operating on a structural deficit. So it would be very difficult for us to invest in these in these program services staffing with a structural deficit. So the only way that we are able to invest in these or make these investments is because these are one-time funds and we know that they will go away. And therefore, we would be posting all of these positions essentially with that with that caveat, if you will, that these are temporary positions. And we hope that we would be able to compete for applicants who are committed to serving SAC City Unified. We did start a conversation recently with SAC State and are planning a meeting in which we could have discussions with chairs of the different departments on higher ed institution campuses so that we can think creatively about ways in which we can increase internship opportunities, provisional contracting, and hopefully create a pipeline of individuals that would want to take these positions in the future as well. Ultimately, our goal long term is to figure out ways in which we can close that structural deficit, have a budget structure that produces ongoing revenues so that we can, you know, we would be in a position to keep these positions after the one-time funds end. That's not an easy task, but it's one that we're going to stay committed to and rely on board recommendations, guidance. But of course, we can point to these really important board policies that the board adopted recently.
Thank you, Superintendent. Did you have any other questions, Member Phillips? Okay. Thank you. That actually led right up into one of my questions about one-time funds. Because on page five, I think, or yeah, page five, you know, we have a whole thing about using one-time funds. And we've talked a lot about on the sport about not using one-time funds for ongoing costs. And so I think it's important that when this is brought back to the board, like the superintendent said of like showing us, the board of like how these positions were put forth and in terms of are they temporary positions, how are they sustainable? Because they're very important positions to have. So I think that'll be very important for us to see. And I did just want to thank staff before I forget. This was, you know, just a great presentation and a collaborative effort on all of your parts. So thank you for this. On page 11, this is kind of like not, not part of this, but I do want to make a recommendation that in the near future that I work with staff, I'd like to work on a resolution in terms of suspensions for K through third grade, students K through third grade. And Superintendent, if I could work with staff on that resolution to bring to the board in the near future, that would be great. And then page 21. I did have a question in terms of, it says home visits. Is that additional funding that would be used for the parent-teacher home visits? Page 21.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I think that's in reference to social workers. And they do make those parent-teacher home visits, but this is actually in addition to. So it's not just counting the parent-teacher home visits. It's really around sometimes more those intensive supports and outreaches that we're doing.
Oh, that's fantastic. I'm glad we're looking into this. And I'm hoping that we can also look into additional funding for the parent-teacher home visits. Those visits are critical for our families and not really pinpointed for troubled students. We just, you know, pick students and they go out and they visit their homes and they talk about their hopes and dreams. And that's a valuable program for all of our students. And then page four. I did have a question about school safety because I saw that there was a line item on here for school safety and COVID mitigation. But I didn't see a lot in here that unless I totally missed, I apologize. There was a lot of info about school safety.
Yeah, I can take that. President Bridget, on page three of the executive summary, we have some examples of what would fall under school safety and COVID mitigation. And again, these are just based on some of the activities we've been doing, but not necessarily all-inclusive of what would fall under school safety. I can give you an example that we've had to quickly upgrade some of our camera systems because we didn't realize that there were some areas that were vulnerable to not being monitored because we've always had activity on our campuses. And this last year when we did not, we discovered that, you know, there were some areas that were not being monitored and were more subject to being vandalized. So that's one example of having to relook at our school safety plan. And under this also falls things like our PPE supplies, our preparing for reopening, and our outdoor learning, making sure that those spaces are appropriate and do comply with the guidelines.
Oh, and that's why it's listed under COVID mitigation as well. Okay, gotcha. Perfect. Thank you. I'm going to open it up. I want to make sure we hear from the other, my colleagues as well. Member, Assistant Member Sheik.
Thank you, President Bridget. Sorry, my first question is going to come close to beating a dead horse, but it's on the one-time funds again. You know, we cited this board policy that was adopted in March. And so salaries are typically ongoing expenses and I understand that we're creating temporary positions. So I just wanted to get a more specific answer on what happens when all these positions that have been described as super necessary? I think we've heard from every one of our departments that have asked for positions, how important and critical these positions would be. What's the game plan for the day that those jobs are up? Do we just go back to the status quo?
Yeah, it's a very good question, Assistant Board Member Sheik. I, you know, I'm about to finish my fourth year as superintendent. We've never been in a position where we could think about how to address some of these real inequities that exist in our system. So on the one hand, we're very excited to bring kind of this high-level proposal to the board. And I'll just mention that, you know, our first attempt at bringing more specificity to the board is at a very high level, right? These are kind of the bigger areas that we want to wrap our whole child concept around. We want to hear from you in terms of other programs and services that are important to you. Certainly, the parent-teacher home visit program is one. We have a lot of thoughts around, for example, providing social capital experiences for our students, taking them on more visits, paying for more visits, those kinds of things. We wanted to just present though, you know, kind of high level, those services that were critical for us that would require pretty heavy investments from a staffing perspective, not so much from a programmatic perspective. But back to your question, Member Sheik, we will remain committed to trying to figure out how to stay focused on closing the structural deficit that we face. Until we are able to close that structural deficit, and certainly there's some ways of doing it. There's not a ton of ways. We can hope to see our revenues increase and that there's nothing certain about that, of course. We will continue to try to negotiate ongoing savings. But if we are not able to see those revenues on an ongoing basis actualize over the course of these next couple of years, then to answer your question crudely, I mean, we would not have the resources to continue those services. And that's why they would have to be also posted with that indication.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's definitely tough because it's just another example of how deeply we need to address the structural deficit. I have a quick note for our friends at SSHS, which is, I've heard from the students that have support centers on their campus and they love them beyond words. And so when we're talking about expending one-time funds, I'd be interested in discussing not only FTEs for staff that could run those, but maybe just facilities. Because for a lot of people, it's a room that you can go to and not just the person. And so looking at sites where there might be a part of a room, a room that we can, you know, expand the sort of things we do in our virtual calming room into a real calming room and the sort of resources that are available on the Grace app and bring those in person. I'd just be really interested in something that's a one-time cost in actuality with regards to one of these puzzle pieces here. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Member Sheik. Member Wu?
Doesn't have to be answered right now, but I'd like to know how this COVID plan or post-COVID plan melds with the LCAP plan.
I will give you my answer at the moment, but I certainly appreciate that discussion or that question, Member Wu. And I want to just remind the board that we have often brought to the board the importance of the LCAP plan, driving our SIPSA plans at the school site level and all of that being driven by our district budget priorities as well. So what we're presenting to you tonight is certainly connected and interwoven to the LCAP plan. What Chief Bieda was mentioning about coming back to you with, for example, a set of student-level outcomes or metrics, performance indicators, if you will, will be the way in which we uh, will, uh, be the way in which we ensure that there is very tight alignment. Uh, again, on a temporary basis, uh, to monitor the, uh, value of the, uh, investments that we're going to be making, uh, using these temporary one-time funds, uh, and making sure that, uh, they are tied uh, to, uh, each of the LCAP goals. Uh, I would tie a bit of my earlier response to member Phillips to, 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 to your question as well. And, and just say that, and even, uh, student board member Shakes, that, you know, uh, we are going to take this very seriously, um, in that we believe that we can demonstrate, uh, some positive student, uh, outcomes over the course of the next couple of years so that everyone in our community and in our system can appreciate, uh, the, the level of commitment with which we're going to treat, uh, these one-time funds. And, and hopefully there will be, uh, greater enthusiasm and support, if you will, for us to find ways to continue these investments on an ongoing basis.
Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So thank you, um, Rose and, um, everyone else who presented. Um, this is a lot of information. Um, so I, I just want to appreciate, um, just, just thank, um, staff for working on this. Um, on page four, the 5% for staff support. I just want to clarify, that's essentially the update that we got in more, um, detail throughout the presentation, right? It's really just focusing on this category.
Uh, um, I'll, I'll give you, um, my answer, um, member, uh, Garcia. And it may not be a direct answer to your question, so then you tell me if, if, if that's not the question. Uh, what we are proposing at the moment is, uh, if you think of the last slide that Ms. Ramos presented, that, um, we need to make sure that we are, uh, appropriately set up to, um, make these expenditures and meet all of the compliance regulations, post-position. So, so these funds are going to require that we build up temporarily, for example, our HR, uh, division so that we can process all of the job descriptions, the recruitment, the outreach, all of those kinds of things. There are going to be, um, expenditures that we have to make in the area facilities as well. Uh, those are going to require that we invest in some administrative support. I can, I, I would envision, for example, additional budget analysts, um, that are going to have to monitor these expenditures. Um, and so what we're proposing, uh, at the moment is that no more than 5% of these one-time funds, uh, support, uh, uh, provide those types of supports. Um, um, because it is, uh, a lot of money that we have to make sure, um, we are, uh, providing proper oversight and accountability as well.
Okay, got it. So we need to hire people to help us spend the money. Okay.
Appropriately, yeah.
Yes. And compliance and to the fullest intent of, of the funds. And essentially the fullest intent of the funds is to, um, supplement what is already there. This is supplemental funding, so it's bringing additional services. And many of the categories that I saw here, to my knowledge, are aligned with the intent of how these funds, um, ought to be spent. I also was glad to hear that clarification. This was one of my clarifying questions as well, is that every single school site will receive, um, support. Um, there is going to be, I guess, based on the equity, um, index, there's going to be school sites, because they have less now, that are going to require more, um, funding in order to bring them up to, I don't know, whatever the baseline is, um, as you described it earlier. So I think that's important. Um, I've had some parents reach out, um, concerned that they, their school site may not get the resources that they need simply because, um, as we define equity traditionally, based on student demographics, they don't meet that student demographic. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that all school sites will get some resources because all kids have suffered through this past, um, you know, um, year plus. I also wanted to, um, ask questions about, I think it was slide 14, um, MTSS, the first cohort. And I know that's been very successful, but that was also, um, if I recall correctly, that first cohort was, or school sites that opted into. Um, so I'm just wondering, the second cohort, because we definitely want to make sure that, I would imagine, that the second cohort is reflected on the school sites that actually need, um, to be part of, um, the next round, as opposed to, um, school sites that choose to be part of that next round. So how are we going to maybe switch gears? Because the first round is opting in, the second round, I think, needs to be chosen differently. Or identified differently.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'm gonna ask, uh, both Chief Bieda and, uh, Ms. Kruchman to just give a little bit more context in terms of, um, uh, uh, the selection of the first cohort, the identification of future cohorts. Um, um, because, uh, I do want to make sure that they can clarify, uh, what went into the selection of the first cohort and, and, and how have we identified, uh, the second cohort as well? Uh, member Garcia, if, if that's okay.
Thank you for that question, member Garcia. I'll start and then I would love for, um, our director, Jennifer Kruchman, to, to support and fill in any blanks. I know I'll leave some blanks. Um, I think first and foremost, one of the things that we did solve for, member Garcia, is that artifact of opting in and we didn't, this, this year is not an opt-in year. I apologize if I've misinformed or haven't been clear about that. It's not an opt-in year. We actually designed criteria and, um, we just presented a national MTSS follow-up conference and shared the criteria and actually received a compliment that we thought through it the way that we did in selecting each cohort of our schools. So we selected schools to ensure that because we know there's such variation in our schools, we wanted there to be at least one school in this first cohort that every other school could look to and say, that school's very similar to my school. So that we could, in this second year, pair schools together to start to create that sustainable peer, um, capacity building that we know is going to be really important. So that was one, one criteria that we used. Another criteria that we used is we looked for schools that were already moving into using data in some sort of a team. So one of the reasons Jennifer Kruchman is so important as our MTSS director is she's been leading database decision-making around her be here work, had helped sites to create these diverse teams for shared leadership and to use that data to determine who needs supports, what supports do they need and are those supports working? So we, we also used that criteria. What schools already have a database decision-making team in rhythm that might be supportive? But because we wanted schools that represented all schools, we also selected some schools that did not have database decision-making teams already operating at a, at a, in a rhythmic level so that they could show, and we, they could also teach us what we need to do differently and better to support our schools. We spread and made sure that we have representation from all of our IASs so that our schools could have effective supports. And one, one piece that I'm very proud of is we also made sure that every single board member has schools that are in each and every cohort. So that you can go to your own leaders and hear from them how this is moving through their school. So we, we are, we're ready to, um, we're getting ready to announce our, our second cohort. But from the beginning, we've shared with all of our leaders, this is not an opt-in. This is all, every student and all schools. And we're going to build the supports to make sure that, um, what, you know, it's been kind of exciting is we've had schools and, and, and Director Kruchman can talk about this. But through this year, we've had school leaders starting to say, can I be in cohort two? I know I'm not planned for cohort two, but can I please be in cohort two? So we are generating some positivity. We're excited about that. Jennifer, what did I leave out? I know probably way too much, but what did I?
No, you really didn't. Um, but it was very strategic. We, um, first did this kind of point system, then presented it to the IASs, then filtered it out. They also, um, we also thought of feeder patterns. So we had schools, elementary schools that fed to middle schools, that fed to high schools, that would be in the same cohort so that they could do the work together. So that as students progressed, they would see the same types of systems, no matter what school they were in.
Excellent. Um, I'm glad to hear that. So, um, um, that we're switching gears and this is just a different year. Um, so it's, um, there's flexibility but not choice. So, um, so I'm glad to hear that. I do have just a couple more questions. Um, one, um, on page 20, going back to the 28 school sites with student support centers. Um, and then, um, you know, uh, if you can talk a little bit more about how you're going to scale that. Um, I, I hear the concern, um, and that's valid, um, about using one-time funds for these types of, of, um, supports for our students. Uh, and, and I'm just really excited to hear how we could scale this, but also, um, not necessarily, um, resting in, in this one action and then continuing to figure out ways to sustain these types of efforts, um, beyond these one-time dollars. The state is making available additional funds, um, sometimes via competitive grants, but we can, um, look into those. Um, and they're, they're also in the, in the billions of dollars. So, so just, just to make sure that, that, that staff continues to look for other ways to, to keep these investments going beyond the one-time, the life of these one-time dollars. So if you can talk a little bit about how you're scaling these, um, 28 school sites, two more sites.
Yeah, so, so we used our equity indices to really look at what's existing, what's still needed. And then, you know, what sites have nothing. And so we can bring you those details of, of our thinking and how we looked at scaling that up. It, it does represent a very large lift in, in staffing up. And I love where your thinking is though, because we were also already looking at some of the community schools grant funding that we did receive, some other funding coming our way. But also something to keep in mind is that many of these positions, not just a social worker, but a nurse, a psych, a speech therapist, can also participate in Medi-Cal billing. Um, and we know it's not going to fully fund these positions, but every single dollar or penny that we can bring back to our district, uh, we have really a moral ethical obligation to do so. Um, so does that, can it get to the, the heart? I know I could.
How that gets to it, because I know you have a plan, um, but sometimes, um, sometimes we just need to make sure that, um, we hear it over and over that there is a plan. Um, and it doesn't always look pretty, right? It can get messy, but at the end of the day, the result is that we get to keep some of these positions, um, beyond these dollars. And then, um, just, um, a couple more questions. Um, a big, um, issue in, in my area, and I know in other areas as well throughout the district, is the issue of after-school programs, before and after-school programs. I know that there may be an opportunity to increase capacity for the subsidized programs. I don't have too many schools with subsidized programs. So I want to know, um, where do, where do partnerships, um, with, um, community-based organizations fit into maybe the table on page three of the executive summary? Um, because that's, that's critical, um, that those, um, services and opportunities be in place um, by this fall. So I know I've, I've talked about this in the past. I just, I just think it's really important and I just, I don't know where they would naturally fit. So I just want to make sure that, that I, I left that, um, uh, priority air, issue in my area.
Thank you, uh, member Garcia. I'll just mention that actually, um, that is another good example of, um, where, uh, our team has talked about the need to increase again on a temporary basis, uh, the administrative support for that kind of activity. Because right now, we don't really have anyone dedicated to advance that kind of initiative. Um, but it is one that we should look into very, very closely. Um, it's kind of being managed right now by Manpreet Cower, uh, who oversees the entire youth development program, as you know. Uh, just in terms of the recent, uh, discussions, uh, related to fourth R, SAC Chinese. I mean, that has just created a lot of, uh, additional work uh, to make sure that we continue to coordinate those partnerships as well. Um, and again, uh, those are the type of details that will come back because we do think that we would benefit from, from a position that is coordinating that kind of work as well, which we don't have right now. Um, and so, uh, we will keep you posted on, uh, how we think, uh, we can meet the needs of, uh, of, of, of portions of our community where, where that demand is, is, is clear.
For this fall?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just want to make sure that it's the timeline, we're, we're talking about the same timeline. Um, and then, um, just, um, and lastly, uh, I think at what point, I'm trying to figure out. So today I feel that I understood we're focusing on this, the administrative or the central office support that's necessary. We need to hire people so that way they can help us spend these dollars. But, um, I'm wondering, um, at what point do we talk about uh, what the school sites themselves are getting, um, and how they're getting those dollars? Are they going to be flexible so that they can support, um, the need at their particular school that may not fit into a district-wide initiative? So I'm just trying to figure out, when do they get to see those dollars? And then I have a, a related question about workforce. Um, when do we start talking about hiring additional teachers, hiring additional classified staff? Some of these dollars, that's one of the conditions, is that we hire, um, or rehire classified. So I'm just trying to figure those pieces out that, um, we didn't talk about today and how they fit into the, um, maybe the next conversation. Because I know this is, this is just the beginning.
Certainly, it, it is the beginning. And I think to your second question, we will come back with more specific information. But on the first one, if, 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 if you allow, uh, I do want to make sure that, uh, uh, someone like, uh, Victoria Flores, uh, just gives you a bit more, gives the board a bit more perspective on, um, on, on, um, this idea that I don't, I, I, I don't want our board to think that because we are thinking of the need to hire more social workers, that that should be interpreted as that is a CERN position, that that is a district position, if you will. Um, so if I can ask, um, uh, Ms. Flores and, and anyone else, uh, that presented today uh, about the way that we think we can serve our, our students, um, uh, more appropriately. Um, uh, where are these positions? Where do they spend their time? Those kinds of things, please.
Sure, yeah, I can speak to at least, um, you know, our s- school social workers, student support specialists, and even school nurses, even though they're assigned centrally and we provide their professional development and, you know, policies and procedures. They are almost 100% school site-serving. So many of them, they don't have offices at the, the central office, like student board member Shake spoke about. They have a support center or spaces on those campuses and are really woven in to the culture of those campuses that they're assigned to. Even staff that are only there like one day a week, um, become very, very integral to those campuses. So those are direct services, you know, and supports to that site. They just get their professional development and, and oversight from us centrally as being a part of that profession. Um, so I hope that, that's helped speak to that.
No, that helps. Um, I, I think, um, what comes to mind is maybe some other type of need at, at a school site that, that is not related to mental health. I, I get that the, maybe the hiring or, um, is going to be at the district level, obviously, but then the, the services themselves are at the school site. So I, I get that part with, um, you know, social, emotional and mental health. But I'm just, I don't know, maybe it's additional tutoring, um, above and beyond maybe what the district offers. And, and, and I think, um, so I'm just trying to think of, of, of addition. And I think, so I'm just trying to think of additional potential needs at a school site and wondering if, if, if we're thinking about school sites getting dollars for their local budgets and then they decide how to support their students. So just trying to figure that part out. I don't know if you have an answer today, but if, if you can just let me know if you're thinking along those lines, that school sites directly get funded.
We will come back with more details on that front, Member Garcia. And again, we should have probably just included, just as a reminder, the infographic that I described, which is that, again, we believe that there's a lot of room for innovation at our school site level. And our vision is that that just has to be demonstrated through the development of very robust living SIPsas, right? Where I choose, as you mentioned, I choose to expand my tutoring program. However, I think I would be responsive to my local context as principal. But I understand that it's tied to student outcome and to student outcome metrics, if you will. And those are aligned to LCAP goal number three, for example, right? And that is, that is the journey that we're on right now, where we want to make sure that, as maybe board members are thinking, okay, I see that that is centralized, even though it's at school sites, but I still think of it as centralized. There's a lot of opportunities for decentralized innovative projects that will still have a little bit of a tie to it, which is, you know, it needs to show up in a robust SIPSA. It needs to be aligned to an LCAP goal. And that's the journey that we've been on for two years and we're going to stay committed to that. So if you think of that infographic that we've presented here and their kind of triangular, where it has the SIPSA and the LCAP and the district budget and the guiding principle in the middle, that's kind of the journey that we're on and we have a long ways to go, of course. But we will come back with details about how we, how we have continued to monitor SIPsas, mid-review SIPsas, because we want to stay committed to that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Member Morosky.
Thank you. And then I just want to echo the thanks to staff and, and a lot of the comments, great comments from all of my fellow board members. So I have, I guess, some observations to share and some kind of questions. I think starting with process, process questions. So I feel like this, you know, the, the chart that shows, you know, the breakdown of what the different buckets of funding are, you know, I feel like those are largely kind of the right buckets to, to be looking at. I did feel like the, the wonderful presentation that had all the MTSS components was very coherent in, in thinking about what MTSS looks like. But I couldn't necessarily connect it to the LCAP goals. And although I know they are related, but I couldn't, you know, I couldn't see it. You know, so I think, anyway, I know this is a journey that we are on, you know, to put these things all together. And so it did feel a little, a little disjointed in terms of the different initiatives and, you know, kind of setups that we have, even with the, you know, we have the MTSS pieces that we talked about today and the, and the positions. There is the funding chart, which has some, some other things that, you know, we didn't, we didn't really touch on today, you know, in terms of PPE, some of the facilities stuff, technology, you know, which is a big, a big piece. So anyway, I think that like overall, I, I would want to ask at this point, what, what do you envision is the, the process and the, like, what is the reporting, the accountability reporting that will kind of tie all these things together? Like what is, at this point, what do you, what are you suggesting as far as that process?
Yeah, I'm going to try to be short and specific and I know that this is going to require more, more discussion, Member Morosky. Just because it's actually relatively new and you haven't had the opportunity to hear about CCEE's SIR report. And I hope that we can bring that to the board soon. But part of our effort around the SIR recommendations, the systemic instructional review recommendations from CCEE, what we have informed them is that we actually think that it's critical to stitch together what you just mentioned. How it is that our focus on things like something as foundational as MTSS has to be stitched to the LCAP plan. Now, I'm not talking about the LCAP plan, as you might adopt it in less than a month, but the implementation of that LCAP plan. We are very fortunate that we have entered into a partnership with Carnegie Foundation for Teaching and Learning. And as you know, Carnegie is really at the forefront of the use of continuous improvement. This is being done through our differentiated assistance support from SCOWI. And they actually, in their scope of work, the intention of the scope of work is to do the stitching. But it's just launching, literally. And so we will come back. The initial scope of work takes us through about mid-July. And we will be working very closely with our partners at SCOWI as our DA provider, differentiated assistance provider, with staff from Carnegie and of course, our staff to do that stitching that we're calling between what you actually just said. So, so we're very excited about the partnership and actually thank you for bringing up that, that as a concern that we had also thought about. And we'll come back and provide an update on what that plan begins to look like over the next two months or so.
Okay, okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. I'm glad, you know, I think we're all on the same page in terms of recognizing we have a lot of, we have a lot of plans and we need to put them all together. Can I ask a couple others, just specific questions around, what is the, what is the process for board and public review of the plans? The approval of expenditure plans? When will this, when will they be proposed in the budget? And how much will be proposed, say, in the upcoming budget versus adopted at a, you know, a year from now? Or are we going to adopt a multi-year expenditure plan? Or just, do you have a sense of what you want that to look like at this point?
You know, it's, we do have a sense of it, largely dependent and impacted again by just our current capacity. So as I mentioned, we need to come back to the board and give you kind of a prioritization of those positions that are going to require new job descriptions, working with our HR department, those that already exist, those that have to be refined. But we do think that we have to move fairly quickly in posting some of those positions so that we can start the recruitment process. Because we want to try to be in a position where some of these positions that were discussed today, that we are recruiting viable candidates. We know we need social workers. We know we're looking for more nurses. We know that we're looking for more school psychologists. So, so that may not be, you know, where we come back for that kind of approval. But we do understand that it's going to be important to come back to the board and continue to hear feedback and, and thoughts from you and from our community about other areas that, that we could kind of transition over time. But our immediate priority are for some positions that we know with certainty that we need to start moving and start posting and start the hiring process. But we do owe you kind of a timeline beyond that. That's why we wanted to start with this overview, because these are kind of priority positions that we think are critical.
Okay, and this is going back to, I guess, looking at what 21, 22 is, that these are a certain, you know, a certain allocation of, I guess, every one of the, the different funding pots. And so right now, those, so those funds are not budgeted, correct? Or maybe, maybe just the AB 86?
Yeah.
If you can remind me.
I can let Ms. Ramos take us back to those slides and give an explanation to the board and to our community.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. If we can go back to slide. If, yeah, if you have slide number two available, that would be great. But slide number two shows the currently, the current awards, the 280 million. If you move over to the, to the right, you'll see what's been expended to date, the 7 million out of those. And then, then the total allocated, there we go. The total allocated, which totals 42 million. It's what, is what has been budgeted so far. And so the other, the other remaining will be budgeted. There's a few small amounts in the, I believe it's the year one, that have been budgeted. And so we were waiting to see what this plan would look like before we start rolling those out into some more specific categories. Because as you guys know, our fallback category is always the books and supplies. And although that is, you know, totally appropriate when we don't know where to put funding, it does create additional workforce staff, because then we have to move resources out of there into the appropriate line item. So it's better, especially with these funds, now that we kind of have an idea of how much we're going to be allocating by year, to go ahead and just start putting them into the, those appropriate categories, whether it's, you know, personnel costs, benefits, the services, and of course, you know, the supplies, to the best of our, of our knowledge at the time.
Okay, okay, I see. And so there's, you know, a couple different funding categories that have been, that have been budgeted, which, which means the board has approved those for expenditure. So I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand, when is the next board approval of a kind of an expenditure plan for these funds? Is it, is it in our June budget that we'll be adopting?
We have a few in the June budget, but certainly not all. I believe, I just had that number in front of me that, I'm not sure if Jesse's still on the line, to, that show how much we have not yet budgeted. But it's, it's the majority, the big chunk items that have not been budgeted yet. And as we start to refine what we're presenting tonight, we'll start to build those into the budget. And then when we bring you back another budget, we'll bring you an update when we do the, well, depending on how the state budget comes out, if it's something that's, you know, significant enough to warrant the 40, 45-day budget revision, you'll see something in August. And assuming, you know, we could still bring you an update in August, not a problem. But you're going to see an official, I guess, informational share when we bring to you the unaudited actuals in September, when we close the books and we bring you, you know, what that, the year for 2021 closed like. And then in there, we can bring you certainly a budget update for the current year budget.
Okay. Okay, so some of those, some of those funds will be in the June budget, maybe more in August. Is that right? Yeah, okay, okay. I'm just trying to, trying to, you know, kind of process this all. So, you know, and just being cognizant that, you know, this is, this is colleagues, our opportunity to weigh in and approve these, you know, these expenditures. So, you know, if we, if we approve just the entire expenditures just for, you know, whatever the plan is, then that's, that's, you know, we'll just get updated on what those, on what those dollars have been spent on. Versus if we, if we want to, you know, have, have real input and direct the, the funds and, you know, make sure that they're, that they're allocated, you know, in a aligned way and all of that. Then I think we need to think about, you know, what do we need to ask for as a board to, just to have that accountability, right? To, to make sure that we are spending, spending it well, that we have a good plan, that we all understand, you know, what the plan is. You know, I do, I do also have, have the same concerns that have been expressed about the, you know, the reliance on one-time funds to hire staff. You know, this is something that, that we've discussed. And, you know, well, like, I'm not going to suggest that we should, you know, just like keep our, keep our kids suffering without these services because we can't afford them and to maintain them in three years. I mean, I certainly think that, you know, our students need the services now. But I think, I think there's, you know, there's a way we can, we can be smart about expending some of those funds in a way that builds capacity and doesn't necessarily just demand those ongoing services. Like I, like I heard with the PBIS coaches, that, you know, that they will be, they will be building capacity of the school staff. And so even if we can't afford to maintain those positions after three years, we will still have that in place, right? We will still have that built up, so.
And Member Morosky, if I can just interject, I know that you were one of the board members that when we presented this topic a few months ago, you asked for this kind of workshop setting. And in fact, I mean, this is the kind of conversation we need to have in this type of setting. I know the board understands this and the seriousness of it. And so I'll just, kind of just a reminder, we're entering budget adoption season starting next week. And so in some ways, this was timed, although, you know, we've been asking you to come almost every single week for board meetings. The fact that we're kind of having this discussion today, a week before we're going to enter in earnest into kind of like, what is our budget? What are our priorities? We are about to adopt an LCAP. So, so, so if we could all just, you know, make sure that we again, review that LCAP, that we come back next week, because we are going to be asking you to think about the budget adoption, those priorities. So I think what you're asking from our board is very appropriate, particularly as we get ready for next week's board meeting and then two weeks after that for an important vote on the actual budget adoption for the next fiscal year.
Thank you for that. I guess just a couple more comments and I'll wrap up, sorry. So one thing that, that I was kind of wondering is, you know, is, I mean, it's not called out, I think it would, it's sort of implicit in here, but that, that there is a plan for specific subgroups that have really suffered through COVID and need additional support. You know, there's our typical groups that we, that we know, you know, we're not serving well right now. But then there's also other, other, maybe just subpopulations, like all of the first graders who did Kinder online. You know, like I just, I just have this intuition that, that probably didn't work that well for like most kids, right? So there, I mean, there, there's a lot more of that foundational unfinished learning that has maybe happened in that group or, you know, and I don't know, I don't have the academic expertise to know like which those are. But I feel like there are these like touch points and these specific things that need to be addressed that I just, I hope is, is implied in here, but, but should, I think, be called out more specifically. And I do feel like, you know, this is a great, you know, it's a great opportunity to invest in all of these things that our kids need. That it's also, there are some really COVID-specific things that maybe, then maybe we're not as called out in this plan as, as I thought, you know, we might want to. Like, you know, for instance, mental health support for staff, you know, like just some of these kind of recovery things that I feel like we need to think about. I appreciated that, you know, that, that we are going to look to medical reimbursement and hopefully, you know, other, other plans reimbursement as well in the future. I would like to see, you know, what I didn't see addressed here that I would also like to see is just more opportunities for our children. You know, like I would love to see like an opportunity audit of. You know, like, I would love to see like an opportunity audit of, you know, who has access to what in our system, because I still don't understand that. Who has access to like arts curriculum? Who has access to extracurriculars and field trips? And because I feel like our kids lost so much over the last year and a half that, that, you know, I want to make those things up to, to our children and expand those opportunities too. And I, and I would just go back to one of the public comments on, and then thinking about investments that, you know, we can make one time that have a long-term benefit. And that training on arts integration, for instance, that could be a really powerful way to address, you know, some of the, the trauma and also train our teachers. You know, we know, we know that arts increases engagement, parents and, and children and families. We know it has ties to academic achievement. So I, I think, you know, thinking, just thinking strategically about some of those investments that we can make one time that will have a long-term benefit. I feel like that idea of arts integration and increasing arts opportunities for our kids just checks a lot of boxes. So I would just encourage us to think, think about that. And lastly, I'd just say that I fully support and I'm glad that we have a set aside for increasing administrative capacity. Because I, I would be terrified to think that we're going to try to spend this much money without, you know, bolstering those support positions. Because I know, you know, this, this, this year has been hard to impossible and we just can't sustain that. So really appreciate all of the work and look forward to further conversations. Thank you.
Member Villa.
Don't worry, guys, I'll keep this short. I just have a few questions, not a few questions, a few statements. Again, I'm going to just say same thing, concerned about the sustainability of this. We've made many comments in many of our meetings about not using one-time funds for things that aren't going to work in the long term. And now we're going to renegotiate that, that same thing that we've been against. Not sure how I feel about that. Especially I'm worried about we're hiring, although we need these folks, but these are going to be short-term positions. And how are we going to hire high-quality individuals, knowing that they're only going to have a very short term? That does not make sense to me, I'm sorry. But I, I don't think that's really going to be the best bang for our buck. I'd like to see more information about working again with the local college, the pipeline, working with the credentialing programs, see more of that data, be resourceful and creative with these funds for actual folks in our community and supporting them in a pipeline of hopefully wanting to join our district and be a long-term. I love the idea, that's some things that I've heard as well, is creating a standalone program at the school sites for mental health or a support center that, again, it can stand alone. You know, different from a library, but some kind of really creative resource for students. I think that is going to be our best, again, bang for our buck. That's long-term, doesn't need to have, it goes back to our structural deficit when we have these negotiated high costs and insurance costs are rising. How are we going to maintain those positions? It's just, again, it doesn't support our students. And I think 2025 is going to come quickly and we're going to be faced with more tough decisions as a board. And I'm, I'm sure like many of you, will be very concerned when we have to either let folks go or really look at what's going to be on the chopping block. I'm worried about that. I also, like I said, I know we lack a lot of support. You know, we need things for our teachers and our staff, but I don't want to roll out all of these wonderful plans and then we're going to let them die. And who's that going to be let down? Our families, our communities and our students who, what these funds were intended to go for. Also going to say two quick things. You know, what is SCOWI? How are they going to look at us spending these one-time funds on a long-term funding for salaries when we're already in this situation? And I agree with board member Mirovsky. I think the most bang for our buck is going to be spent on art, music programs, field trips, a real creative approach to giving students something outside of the classroom that is fundamentally going to impact them in the long term. I think that's going to be where we're going to see success for our students and for our families. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I totally agree. And it made me think of one thing that I would like for us and, and staff to consider is parent resource centers. Many, many of our parent resource centers were taken out of our schools over the years. And our parents have suffered through this pandemic as well. And they're going to need help to help navigate through the system. And so if we can think about adding some additional parent resource centers throughout our district, it would be nice to have one in each school available that, that has a space available or even just a cubicle available that, that they can come in. And then one last thing. I, regarding the arts, I don't want an answer for this from staff right now, but I, one thing to consider, I know in my area, I have had many complaints that during one-stop staffing, arts programs and band programs were then removed from school sites. And so when we bring this back up, we can figure out how, if we're going to look at arts, how do we incorporate those back into school sites since they were cut during one-stop staffing? So, did member Rhodes?
Yeah, I, I agree with the, the arts and integration work. I think that's, that is some pivotal work. And I also think that a great usage of one-time fundings would be looking at how we recreate like space at the facilities, right? I, I think that you can use funds that way and it just, it's, it's there at our school sites. And I think that outside of the facilities, the major agents like that, but like, how do you recreate space? Isn't that all? It's cool, guys. Can you hear me better now? All right. All right, so now back to us saying the utilizing facilities and looking how we recreate space at our school sites are going to be a huge win, a huge win. I think also we talk about, I think it was member Garcia who spoke about it, where we're saying, you know, for our classified staffing. As we come back from COVID and we have more students on site, we have to really be cognizant of what we need on custodials and custodians at sites to make sure that we're up to date. And right now, we don't have enough custodians to, to fit that need at our school site. So that's going to be something that we have to look at. School nurses as well. The ratio of students to school nurses are, are wild. And, and so we're going to need that, and that's like COVID-related. These things are specifically COVID-related. But I would say long-term, it's our like health and wellness of our students related in general. And then I would just like to talk about school climate and uplift the work of principal Gavita at Cesar Chavez. I think the work that he's been able to do with his staff there at Cesar Chavez, because previously there, like I said before, and you heard it here, capital suspension rates highest in California by suspending black children. And the work that he's been able to do, you know, 96% like reduction is, is huge work. As there's more to be done, but as, when I was first elected, that's like one of the first conversations we had, because that's in Area 5. And, you know, I know where it's hard is. And so I wanted to like, hey, lift that up. And this kind of through this conversation that there's been some great work done there. And I think that's that PBIS work, we can have more great work, especially for the areas that are really impacted. So I appreciate that PBIS work is just like something we're going to do. It's not like, hey, you could do it possibly, but it's just what we're doing. So that's me for, for today. Everybody has said great things. And so I, if you see my list, I checked, most of my questions were checked off as you guys are talking. So I do appreciate that. But this is a great challenge to have money, right? And then to figure out how we equitably utilize that money to long-term impact our whole system. So that's it for me. Thank you, guys.
Member Pritchett, with your permission, I do, we started the presentation largely just reminding our board and our community about our foundational strategy. And I would like to ask Chief Bieda to try to kind of close in terms of our, of our comments and our responses based on a lot of your comments and questions, how we see these things coming together from that foundational strategy's lens of MTSS. So if Chief Bieda can, can do that, I think it would be appropriate.
Thank you. You, as I listened tonight, you, the questions that you asked, A are very impressive, but they completely lead us back to our MTSS foundational strategy. First and foremost, thinking about that question that you asked, member Mirovsky, what about our first graders who went through kindergarten in COVID? First grade is one of the grades that I taught the most years in title and non-title in teaching phonological awareness and systemic explicit phonics. It's hard and when you're in place, in space with kids and being able to do that over Zoom, I share your worry and your, and your concern. But I think it's important to know that when we're talking about database decision-making, and I'll bring this back up, and I know, I think somebody said that they were bringing it up over and over again about the use of one-time funds. I'll bring up over and over again, we have to have high-quality assessment opportunities to know what those kids learned and what they didn't learn. None of us should assume that they did not learn. We just need to know what did they learn and what didn't they learn? So we can be very, very efficient with our time and move in with these targeted supports to get them just what they need. MTSS helps us to do that. So when you say, are we focused on, on those first graders? You bet. We're focused on those first graders. Our whole system does. I heard from, from all, and I appreciate the concern. It's our concern too. It's superintendent's concern. And he continues to ask that same question. This use of these funds over this short period of time, how do we ensure that we hire high-quality? Our kids need and deserve only the best. How do we retain them? How do we make sure that wherever we land in this next couple of years, that they want to still be here with us? We want them to still be here with us. And so there's, there are many parts to that. We need to have a warm, welcoming environment for our staff. It needs to be a place where people want to complete their careers. We need to make sure that it's that, that that's who we are and that we have those supports in place. So I think that's really important. And so the pipeline that member Villa was talking about, there is that pipeline. But what do we do to make an inclusive system so that people want to be here and teach and work here for our kids? I think that's really important over these next few years. And also, we're talking about the metrics and the data. Database decision-making is going to help us to know, are these positions that we know are only temporary right now, are they having an impact on our kids? That data is going to inform us, drive us and help us to decide as we move through these one-time funds, what do we need to fight to keep? And what do we say? Nope, that's, that is not what we need to fight to keep. But we're going to need to be really together and clear on analyzing that as we move through this time. And I think member Phillips asked an incredible question about what positions are needed that we already have? What's that funding look like? And what's the cost out funding look like for what we're recommending? And you also mentioned this temporary funding. You said to, you know, in science, the symbol for change is a triangle. So you said, how are we going to ensure that this temporary funding is going to change equity? Because what you're right about is pre-pandemic historically and way before me, our data shows we're underserving kids. So do we think that in two years, we're going to move in with this bulleted list of supports? And that everything's going to be okay? It's not. It's going to take us a long time. So what we need to make sure that we can provide for you and our community are the data, the metrics that say, this is working. And then we've, we're going to have to figure out a way to fight to keep it, to, to keep those positions or those structures. But board members, if we do not have an assessment portfolio, I, I, I can't really do for you what you're asking for. I have, I will have to have data. Everything comes back to data. The LCAP metrics that we're asking for this evening, we have to have data to link it to our SIPSAs so that our site leaders can determine how to spend any funds. Like member Garcia said, what about getting these dollars to the schools? How will they spend it? That's great, but how do we tell if those dollars, I spent a dollar and I got this outcome for kids? We cannot do that if we do not have assessments. So I think we have it, we have it, we have challenges coming. We have an incredible opportunity. And we have to use this time to be able to find out what's going to work, what's not going to work, and how we continue to move forward.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bieda. All right, with that, this is an informational item and will be brought back to us. We're really looking forward to working with you staff. Thank you so much for all your hard work on this. With that, I will entertain a motion for a German second student preferential vote. And I have a motion and a second, sorry, I did that totally backwards. All in favor, say aye. All right, good night.